All the meeting to order. Sir, please call the roll.
Counselor Donato.
Present.
Counselor Felkoff.
Present.
Counselor Feltnar.
Present.
Counselor Canelis.
Present.
Counselor Palumbo.
Present.
Counselor Pitorelli.
Present.
Counselor Woodland.
Present.
Counselor Baze.
Present.
President Sedaris.
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. This is a sign up public forum, and tonight we have Barbara Epstein. And please understand that this is a, under the council rules, you're allowed to speak for two minutes, and we don't respond to any of your, if you have an inquiry in this evening. So please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and counselors and citizens. I'm Barbara Epstein. I'm a member of the citizen-led Watertown Public Arts and Culture Committee. And for the last six years, as most of you know, I hope, we have worked with the Planning Department and with the Recreation Department, personnel from the public schools, the DPW, and businesses to produce and support a number of public art projects, including several murals, one of which won recognition from the New England Foundation for the Arts, oral histories, and a guidebook to public art for residents, developers, and public officials. And we've had a really enthusiastic public response to these activities and a comprehensive plan that calls for promoting cultural resources. And it seemed logical and timely to take the next step, to do some planning around the future of public art in Watertown. So here with me today are several members of an advisory committee that with the Planning Department we convened. Michael Bobbitt is from the New Repertory Theater. Monica Fairburn is a landscape designer and former museum administrator. John Chikowski is from Perkins. And we have a number of other representatives of cultural and arts organizations, education, public works, and other organizations in Watertown, and technical assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And to date, over the summer, we produced a public survey, translated in three languages in addition to English, and took 500-plus responses over the course of the summer. We've had discussions with local organizations and businesses, and we're about to have the first of two public forums, and that's really the point of my, my presence here tonight. October 30th at the Watertown Middle School from 6:00 to 8:30, we'll be talking about vision, values, locations, media, and it includes dinner, babysitting, public accommodation. And on December 9th at the Mosecian, we'll be discussing nuts and bolts of investment, committee structure, funding, et cetera. So I would like to invite all of you to please come, participate, whether you're a fan of public art, or agnostic, or an opponent. We welcome your input and conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't signed up that would like to speak in public forum? Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item, which is the Examination of Minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of September 17?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 17th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is President's report, and we're looking for approval of sending a letter to Mastart regarding Mastart Workforce Transportation Program. And I'm going to recognize Steve McGoon to give us a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we've already applied to MastDOT for one such grant application related to the shuttle pilot program in the Pleasance Street Corridor. This is the second one we're doing cooperatively on a regional basis to apply to get grant funding to help us bring Blue Bikes to the community. As you know, Lime Bikes is operator that was operating in town and is no longer as of this spring. So this is an opportunity to bring Blue Bikes to the community, also addresses two of the major issues we had with bike shares to date, which is one, that we can then use these to go into Cambridge, into Somerville, into Boston. And secondly, the issue of bikes being left randomly. This has bike stations, so they wouldn't be strewn about the community. So again, this is something that we would have a match for, and we're looking for a support letter from the council.
Can I get a motion to approve sending the letter?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Canelis.
Thank you. I noticed in the email here that you had forwarded Mr. McGoon on the second, if I may through you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. Talking about an estimate of $100,000 for five bike stations with a match of 20%, et cetera. Is this a one-time, or what would be subsequent charges?
Yes. So those expenditures are a one-time capital expense to get the station and the bikes. The hope and expectation is that the Blue Bikes would be self-sustaining. So the fees that people pay to use the bikes would pay the operational costs.
If I may, as a follow-up, so there would be no subsequent charges to Watertown?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Oh, excuse me, if I may.
Sorry.
Any idea where the five bike stations would be positioned?
Not a specific location, but they tend to go emanate out from existing service. So it would be logical Coolidge Square, Mount Auburn Corridor, Arsenal Corridor towards Watertown Square, and somewhere within those two corridors would likely be the initial locations.
Thank you.
Counselor Felkoff.
Yeah, I didn't know that about Lime Bikes, and maybe there was something that I missed. But if you have any information you could send to us about what, the status of Lime Bikes and why they're not, were not renewed, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Yep. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Yep.
Next item is motions, orders, and resolutions, and 6A is a resolution authorizing a transfer of $514,510 from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve account to various fiscal year 2020 Police Department accounts in order to adjust the fiscal year 2020 Police Department budget as a result of fiscal year 2017 to 2019 collective bargaining agreements with the Police Association and the Police Supervisors Association. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Just to follow up, as you recall back when Town Council voted the fiscal year 20 budget on June 4th, we had forward correspondence on May 31, moving $600,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Police Department budget to the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve pending agreements on proposed fiscal years 2017 to 2019 collective bargaining agreement with the Police Association and Police Supervisors. It indicated at that time, back at the end of May, once agreements are reached with the Police Association, Police Supervisors, our respective request transfers of funds be considered. As a follow-up, back on September, at the September 24th Town Council meeting, there was a transfer for funding of the Police Supervisors Agreement for fiscal years 17, 2017 to 2019, along with the previous transfer back on June 25 for the Police Association. I had indicated the amended fiscal year 2019 compensation to Police Association, Police Supervisors need to be adjusted in the fiscal year 2020 budget. Therefore, Mr. President, members of the council, ask for your favorable consideration. The transfer amount would be $514,510 from fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve to seven various police department fiscal year 2020 budgets, budget accounts, along with Medicare tax, and this again would to be adjusted, moving the monies back into the fiscal year 2020 Police Department budget. Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $514,510 as noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
Counselor Feltnar?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Pitorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. 6B is a first reading on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2020 budget. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, tonight is a first reading on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2020 budget. The public hearing in action would be two weeks from tonight at the October 22nd Town Council meeting. But by way of background for the audience here and at home, the proposed budget amendment is related to four items, which is as follows. The new growth has been updated from the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 budget in June. Additionally, we now have the receipts of the, receipt of the actual fiscal year 2020 cherry sheet receipts and charges. We'll be also appropriating monies proposed from the Collector Bargain Stabilization Fund to replenish the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve for the monies related to the fiscal year 2017 to 19 collective buying agreements with both the Police Association and Police Supervisors, and then also appropriating a half a million dollars to the Capital Project Stabilization Fund in order to continue the annual transfer of a half a million dollars through fiscal year 2024 to support capital projects. The proposed amendment tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, totals $2,091,194, and the proposed, the revised fiscal year 2020 revenues and expenditures would be set at $149,849,194. There'll be a presentation two weeks from tonight. Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to move up item 7B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you want to do the, no, first. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 7B is a Committee on Personnel and Town Organization Report Regarding the Salary of the Town Auditor. Counselor Baze is the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Personnel and Town Organization met on Wednesday, September 25th at 7:15 PM. Present were myself, Secretary Angie Canelis, Mark Sedaris, Town Council President, and Kenny Woodland, Town Counselor. I called the meeting to order at 7:16 PM, and we noted that Susan Felkoff, as was unfortunately planned, was not in attendance. The committee discussed a salary increase for Mr. Tom Tracy, Town Auditor. The increase would be retroactive to fiscal year 2018. Council President Mark Sedaris explained that annual reviews are usually done and reported on January 2nd, but because it was done later in the year, April 23rd, 2019, Tom Tracy was not eligible for COLA, which is cost of living, for fiscal year 2018. That's a cost of living increase. Given the inability to pay retroactively back more than two fiscal years for fiscal year 2018, the COLA increase will be a service award. President Sedaris further explained that he had had discussions with both Tom Tracy and the Town Manager, and it was pointed out that the Town Manager had given some of his department heads additional increases due to performance, which can be done with the management salary pool. Carolyn Baze asked about stipend versus salary. Mark Sedaris explained that there are employees that get more than just COLA increases, and he suggested a 2% COLA and 1.5% bonus, just as the Town Manager did with his department heads, to be called a service award for FY 2018. Tom Tracy's current salary, as of July 1st, 2016, is $107,862 a year. The committee discussed the salary and proposed increase, and for comparison purposes, salary increases for other town employees, structure and amount, were also discussed. Mark Sedaris added that although there are steps for town employees, there are not as many as there are for teachers. Angie Canelis added that after the steps, they max out. Mark Sedaris continued by presenting a document showing other salaries in the town hall and community, and made the point, he made the point, and Kenny Woodland agreed, that these people are professionals who do a lot of work and possess a lot of institutional knowledge and cannot be replaced. Ken Woodland pointed out that the town treasurer-collector salary is telling. The salary for that position is $116,000. The auditor should not be making less than the treasurer-collector. Mark Sedaris concurred and added that if a new town auditor had to be hired, the salary would be much higher. Ken Woodland stated that he needed to leave the meeting, and his parting comment was that aside from his duties as town auditor, Tom Tracy had been given two other significant responsibilities for which he should be compensated. He puts in dozens of extra hours and is top-notch at what he does. Mark Sedaris added that Tom Tracy is also an important member of the school building committee and oversees all the finances in that role, and Carolyn Baze added that Tom Tracy got a good review. Angie Canelis made a motion for, for the presentation that was brought forward by Town Council President Mark Sedaris for a salary increase for Tom Tracy amounting to a 2% COLA and a 1.5% performance reward, which will be treated as a service award for fiscal year 2018, and a 2% COLA and 1.5% performance award for fiscal year 2019. And this will result in the town auditor's salary being $115,544 for FY 2019. All were in favor, and the motion passed unanimously. Carolyn Baze adjourned the meeting at 7:34 PM.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Canelis.
Thank you. It should be noted that the minutes were transcribed by an outside person and should be so noted in the minutes.
We will amend them to say that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the report?
Well, I'm sorry, question about the meeting. No, not on the report itself, I guess.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, sorry. I just wondered if there was discussion of just making it 116, the same as the town treasurer, is it just collector, is it just important about the 1.5%? You know, it's like $500 difference, but to be equal to.
Well, a lot of these things we can discuss when we have the public hearing.
Okay.
In two weeks.
Okay.
Because we're just dealing with the report this evening.
Right, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Any other questions on the report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Back to 6B. This is now a first reading on an ordinance amending the town auditor's salary. As you know, by charter, we have to amend the salary of three of our employees by ordinance, which means we have to advertise, and we will have a public hearing. So this is considered tonight an advertisement for the dollar amounts that were presented in the committee report for a public hearing that will happen two weeks from tonight. Next, Committee Reports. 7A is a Committee on Economic Development and Planning Report Regarding Interviews for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Wednesday, September 25, 2019, at 5:00 PM in Lewis P. Andrews Upper Conference Room. President and myself, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair Vincent Pitorelli, Secretary, Staff President Laura Weiner, Senior Transportation Planner, also President and Resident Mark Peterson. The purpose of the meeting was, bless you, to conduct interviews for the ZBA, to conduct staff-proposed adjustments to the Town's Transportation Demand Management, TDM regulations. This report covers only the interviews, which are conducted from 6:00 to 7:00. The discussion of the TDM regulations were conducted from 5:00 to 6:00 and are covered in a subsequent report. Francis Goyez-Flore is seeking appointment to the ZBA. She's an urban planner and an architectural designer, and currently works as a Policy Innovation Associate at Mass Housing. Prior to that, she was a housing and land use planner at MAPC. She feels her experience in these agencies, as well as prior experience in design firms, gives her a solid background to understand the challenges with projects that may come before the board. She loves the vibrancy and diversity of Watertown and wants an opportunity to contribute to her town. Action item, Counsel Felton made a motion, seconded by Counsel Pitorelli, to recommend the Town Council confirm Francis Goyez-Flore for appointment as an alternate member of the ZBA for a term to expire Feb. 15, 2021, voted 3 to 0. David Ferris is seeking appointment to the ZBA, having served on the ZBA since 2009. He's an architect specializing in multi-unit housing. Having seen many changes in Watertown over the years, he feels the design guidelines have been very effective, and have put Watertown in a good spot. He feels that the boards should continue to push developers to do more to make their projects better. He is very happy living here and enjoys serving on the ZBA. Action item, Counsel Felton made a motion, seconded by Counsel Pitorelli, to recommend the Town Council confirm David Ferris for reappointment as a full member of the ZBA for a term to expire Feb. 15, 2024. That was also voted 3 to 0. Meeting adjourned at 6:54 PM. Report prepared respectfully and quickly by Counsel Pitorelli.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number one, Council confirm Francis Goyez-Flore for appointment as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on February 15, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number two, that the Council confirm David Ferris for reappointment as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on February 15, 2024.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 7C is a Committee on Public Safety Report Regarding Interviews for the Traffic Commission. Counselor Feltnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Town Council Committee on Public Safety held our interviews on Wednesday, September 18th at 5:00 PM here in the Town Council Conference Room office. We convened at 5:00 PM for the purpose of interviewing Mr. John S. Erasian and Ms. Kelly J. Gallagher for reappointments to the Traffic Commission. Myself, Counselor Vincent Pitorelli as Vice Chair, and Counselor Tony Palumbo, serving as Secretary, were all in attendance. We first met with John Erasian, who stated he believes the commission treats all petitioners fairly, though he recognizes that some residents walk away disappointed. He felt comfortable with the commission meeting in the early afternoon, and stated that he relies on the expertise of the town staff that serve on the commission. He also noted he brings an institutional memory to the commission, and that he feels he is a familiar face to many of the petitioners, and thus they feel more at ease. He did not think there was a problem with cut-through traffic on most neighborhood streets due in part to motorists using wayfinding apps. Counselor Palumbo made a motion to recommend that John Erasian be reappointed to the Traffic Commission for a term ending May 15, 2020. I seconded the motion and passed unanimously, 3-0. We then interviewed Ms. Kelly Gallagher, and in response to a question from myself about how the commission might be more accessible to the community, she stated that the town could conduct a survey about traffic issues, asking residents for their top five concerns. She was not sure if conducting meetings in the evenings would make a difference for petitioners, and she was not optimistic that the commission could do anything about cut-through traffic on neighborhood streets. She noted that the issue of parking comes up quite often, and she was aware of, though had not studied, the recent parking study released by Department of Community Development and Planning. Counselor Palumba then made the motion to recommend to the council that Kelly Gallagher be reappointed to the Traffic Commission for a term ending May 15, 2021. Counselor Pitorelli seconded and was passed unanimously, 3 to 0. We adjourned at 5:35 PM, and I thank Counselor Palumbo for preparing the minutes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First action item, that the council reappoint John S. Erasian to the Traffic Commission for a term to expire on May 15, 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number two, that the Town Council reappoint Kelly Gallagher to the Traffic Commission for a term to expire on May 15, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 7D is a Committee on Public Works Report Regarding Interviews for the Conservation Commission. Counselor Pitorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee, consisting of myself as Chair, Counselor Palumba as Vice Chair, Counselor Woodland as Secretary, convened on September 25th at 7:00. The purpose of the meeting was to conduct interviews with the Conservation Commission, as well as to make recommendations on a naming policy, which was covered in a separate report. So for the interviews, Patrick Fairburn is a wetland scientist. So for the interviews, Patrick Fairbairn is a wetland scientist, ornithologist, and botanist, and has been on the commission since 2005. Patrick was excited with conservation-related possibilities presented by the passage of the Community Preservation Act and potential of a fully-staffed commission. He felt confident in the commission's ability to contribute from a conservation perspective when the town is considering various developments and proposals. Council Woodland made a motion, seconded by Council Plumba, to recommend the council reconfirm Patrick Fairbairn for reappointment to the commission for a term to expire February 15, 2022. That was voted unanimously. Charles Baring is an environmental law attorney, just recently retired from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, and has served on the commission for many years. He's pleased with the positive changes the commission has been able to make with redevelopment projects along the river. Going forward, he sees a role for the commission to play in promoting conservation and the acquisition of open space. Council Plumba made a motion, seconded by Council Woodland, to recommend the council confirm Charles Baring for reappointment to the commission for a term to expire February 15, 2022. Colleen Egan's educational background is in environmental science, and she currently works in administration at an engineering firm. Colleen noted her desire to give back to the community and use her combined administrative and environmental experience to benefit the commission. Council Plumba made a motion, seconded by Council Woodland, to recommend the council confirm Colleen Egan for appointment to the conservation commission for a term to expire February 15, 2021. The meeting adjourned at 8:17 PM, and the report was prepared promptly by Council Woodland.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number one, that the town council confirm Patrick Fairbairn for reappointment to the conservation commission for a term to expire on February 15, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item number two, that the town council confirm Charles Baring for reappointment to the conservation commission for a term to expire on February 15, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, that the town council confirm Colleen Egan for appointment to the conservation commission for a term to expire on February 15, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number eight is new business, any new business to come before the council this evening. Seeing none, we'll move to communications from the town manager and tonight's preliminary budget overview for fiscal year 2021.
So excited.
We save no money?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council. Tonight, as the president just indicated, is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 preliminary budget overview, covers the period of time July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. Just as this is kind of the kickoff of the fiscal year 2021 budget, as you recall, town council adopted a resolution back at the July 9 council meeting. This is the first process of providing an update. This presentation tonight is in accordance with Article 5 of the Watertown Home Charter. Additionally, Council President Sedaris on September 6 had mailed out invitations to State Senator Brownsberger, who's here with us this evening, Representative Jonathan Heck is here with us this evening, Representative John Lahn, all the department heads, the school committee, the school committee chairman, Mr. Porz is here. We've also got the chairman of the conservation commission and many department heads with us here this evening. All this information is on the town's website. You can visit the website at www.watertown-ma.gov. The process on page begins, a table of contents, talks about pages 3 through 55. There are, the first section is going to be on the financial condition of the community, and that will go all the way up to page 12. Subsequent to that, we'll go over the debt and other relevant information to the budget process, and then beginning on page 28, we'll talk about the forecast revenue and expenditure for fiscal year '21 and beyond. Page 3 is the first two major revenue categories for the town, real estate and personal property taxes, along with local aid. One of the things we're not going to do tonight is focus on fiscal year 2018 column at all. That's just there for historical presence only. If you did the math, that we brought in more monies, $99,000 more in taxes, as well as $14,385 in local aid. You don't need to do the math, you'll see that when we get four or five more pages into the process. I just want to point out a couple of things. You'll see a footnote throughout several of the documents. We had a first reading tonight that the council president had read into the record. It relates to, and the footnote is for the fiscal year 2020 budget amendment of $2,091,094. Those monies of the proposed amendment that council will take up two weeks from tonight are included in the fiscal year '20 document. And just very quickly, and we'll speak when we get to them, but there are three components to the revenue side of the budget amendment. They are as follows. There's $1,356,653, and new growth addition since when the budget was adopted in June, which we'll go over on page 32. Local aid went up when we got the cherry sheets, when the council adopted a budget to the tune of $113,041. And then lastly, we're making a recommendation to move from the collector bargain stabilization fund back to the fiscal year 2020 council reserve to replenish the reserve as a result of the agreements with the police supervisors and police association members for fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '19. These two revenue categories here represent 86.25% of the town's budget. Page 4 is the next revenue category, local receipts. This represents 8.95% of the budget. What we're doing in these items is showing you the fiscal year '19 budget, which ended on June 30, 2019, and the actual monies that came in. When you do that variance, it's the $12,828,643. The positive variance is monies coming in of $15.5 million, which is almost $2.7 million above. Point out three, or four items, three of them really make up the $2.6 million increase. The first one is when you look at fees, the budget was 3.808, and the actual monies coming in were $5,146,266, which is a positive variance of $1.3 million. That's related to the inspection fees. Inspection fees were budgeted at $2.2 million, and we actually brought in $3.5 million. The second positive variance I call your attention to is investment income. The budget was $350,000, and the actual monies coming in were $1,001,62. You'll see that we did increase the budget from $350,000 up to $500,000 for fiscal year '20. The other significant increase was in motor vehicle excise. The budget was $4.2 million, and monies coming in are $4.7 million. The one note, of cautionary note, I would want to point out is Medicare reimbursement revenues. The budget was $420,000. The monies that came in as of June 30, 2019 was only $148,000, thus a significant, a negative variance of almost $272,000. You'll see that we moved the budget from $420,000 down to $320,000, but that's an item that bears watching. The discussions are ongoing with Mr. Tracy and Ms. Perkins, the Director of Finance and Operations for the schools, who's here with us this evening. So that's, again, that's a concern we have to keep an eye on. So there's the local receipts for fiscal year 2019. Page 5, it's the last category in revenue. This is other sources. The dollar amount, again, the dollar amount fiscal year, both the budget and the actual, the same dollar amount, $8.5 million. I call your attention to a couple of items. One of them is the collector bargaining stabilization fund. You'll see that we're having in the revenue budget in fiscal year '20, the $621,500 that I just mentioned. That would be a one-time replenishing of collector bargaining, the fiscal year 2020 town council reserve, and that would empty the account because we've got all the accounts under agreement up until fiscal year '20. Additionally, I point out the fiscal year '19 budget of $8.5 million, going down to $7,193. That's a negative variance of $1.3 million, and it's made up of the following. As you recall, in fiscal year '19, we had a one-time utilization of the sale of property, which was the former East Branch Library. Additionally, a utilization of overlay surplus for half a million dollars. Those two were $1.7 million that we transferred to the three elementary school capital projects. And the $250,000 was the unfunded pension liability, which was ending up the last of that monies to be appropriated from that fund. So when you add those up, it's $1,950,000, and then the one increase would be the $621,500, thus the $1.3 million. So on page 6, you will see a revenue summary, which shows the pages 3 through 5. You don't need to do the mathematics on this item, but if you turn to page 7, you'll see, which is a sheet that we put together. This is the first key page for the results of fiscal year 2019. The fiscal year '19 budget was $142.2 million. What came into the treasury as of June 30, 2019 was $145,032,000. That's a positive variance of $2.8 million. You can see as the local receipts is a significant almost 2.7, and I just mentioned that's related to monies coming in from inspection fees, as well as investment income in motor vehicle excise. You, this dollar amount, the $2,808,326, which is a lot of money to all of us, represents 1.97% above the budget. So it's less than 2% of the budget, so revenue over budget for fiscal year 2019. You'll say, you'll see this later on page 12 when we give the analysis for the fiscal year 2019. Moving to expenditures, the first here is the total departmental dollar amounts fiscal year '19 budget was $90,415,000. The actual expenditures were $88,477, or a return of $1,937,000. You'll see the variance column when we get to page 11. I call your attention to a couple of items. The first one would be public safety, the $21,204,000. That includes all the monies that was appropriated this evening, the $514,510,000. And then the dollar amounts, the other footnote we have is in general government, the town council reserve of $3,251,000 is included in the general government dollar amount. Again, that $3.2 million is assuming council's positive vote two weeks from this evening. The way we're laying out the expenditures, we started this three years ago, it's a little easier to understand. Page 9 is debt retirement, school capital projects, and town capital projects. The dollar amount is only a negative, a turnback, if you will, of $3,654,000. But I want to take a couple of moments to walk through, because this is going to happen during fiscal year 2020. The debt retirement appropriation of $6,001,75,796, the original budget was $8.6 million. So how did it go from $8.6 million when town council appropriated the monies a year ago, June, is because we did transfers of the following items out of the debt retirement appropriation to the school, to the town capital projects, and they are as follows. There was $182,950 for the police mobile data, the library sliding doors, we have our library director, Ms. Cole, with us this evening, $242,916, the northeast, the north fire station, $188,500, the three elementary schools, it was a $200,000 appropriation to paying down some of the debt that we did in June. And in the street and sidewalks, we did $1,585,250 from the streets and sidewalks, which was paying down the debt of monies. So we moved it from debt to capital projects. And then lastly was the public address system for $25,000. So the original budget of $8.4 million, there was a reduction of $2,424,616, and those monies went to the town capital projects that originally had a budget of $1,226,000, and we transferred all those monies I mentioned into, into the town capital projects. I bring this up because during fiscal year 2020, we'll be looking to come forward with town council to paying, paying for, instead of borrowing, some monies that we have in our planned debt for fiscal year '20, and paying outright for the capital items as we move forward on, in fiscal year '20. Page 10 shows you the various other categories, the budget, and then the actual expenditures to date. When you move to page 11, you see really what shows you all the actual, the budget to actual, and then the positive, the returns, if you will. You see here the $1,058,500 for general government. The vast majority of those monies came from council reserve, with $707,000 fell to the bottom line. Thus, here, what this is saying to you this evening is just about a little less than $3,000 to $2.5 million was not spent during fiscal year '19 or returned to the bottom line. That represents 1.76% of the budget. So this is the second key page of the fiscal year '19 results, showing that we had a return of almost $2.5 million. You move to page 12, this is the, shows you the key page, is the financial condition of our, of our community. So how this works is, if you will, is the unreserved fund balance, certified free cash analysis. You start in the fiscal year '18 column, where you have, at the bottom there, it's the $16,374,245. That's the starting point for July 1 of 2018. You add in on page 7 was the results from revenue, was $2.8 million over budget. The expenditures under budget was another almost $2.5 million. When you add those two dollar amounts up, it's $5.3 million. So revenue's over, and expenditures under led to a positive variance of $5.3 million. You subtract out the free cash that was appropriated for fiscal year '20, along with the gap adjustments that are estimated a half a million dollars. So the results from fiscal year 2019, when all the dust settles, subtracting and adding, is when you add those all up, there's a $2.8 million variance. So our unreserved fund balance as of June 30, 2019 is $19,180,494. Now, when we get to page 24, you'll see our stabilization fund of $1,267,296. You add those two together, and what town council was looking for is to have 8 to 15% of the annual operating budget as an unreserved fund balance. What we have as of June 30, 2019, the percentage is 14.38%. So very close to the upper level what council was looking for, the 8 to 15%. That shows you the key condition of the community on page 12. Page 13, we just touched upon, 8 to 15% is the financial reserve. Page 13, we just touched upon eight to fifteen percent, the financial reserves laying out as to why we would want to continue to maintain our triple A bond rating. Page 14 shows you, this is right out of the budget message, shows you the capital, page 31, shows you the various capital improvement program for the five years, which totals five hundred and three million, ninety-six thousand, five hundred, of which the two main components are the elementary school project, along with the high school project, which both totaled to three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. This is one of the basic tenets the town council has been, for years, have been working on, is not defer maintenance or end our recognition of cost of capital equipment, facilities, and infrastructure to future years. Page 15, the next two pages are our permanent debt, permanent general fund debt. There are, when you add these up, you've got nine bond issues, and then the last one was the fiscal year 2019 bond issue. As you recall, we sent out the council on the June 18th. The town sold bonds, the bonds for a 10-year bond sold at a rate of one point three eight four percent. You look at the four million, five fourteen, five hundred dollars, and that's made up of six items, which was the elementary school design, a million, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred, streets and sidewalks for eight thirty-seven, five hundred, Philippa Park, nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, the DPW equipment for a million, four oh three, police department, forty thousand dollars, and the girls locker room at the middle school for two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That, that item, that bond issue will continue and will be paid off in fiscal year 2030. This is another example of what the rating agency talked about, is the low net direct debt is one of the factors in citing for the triple A bond rating. The twenty-six million dollar debt as of June 30, 2020 is significantly low and a very strong debt profile, as evidenced by the rating agencies. Page 16 shows you the twenty-six million, one ten general fund, I'm sorry, permanent debt. Then you had five loan orders that total another twenty-one million, seven twenty-one. Thus, as of June 30, the total permanent and short-term unauthorized on issues debt was forty-seven point eight million dollars as of June 30, 2020. I want to point out two items. One of the things that we did, and we've got the superintendent of schools here, I mentioned Ms. Perkins is also here, the Director of Finance and Operations, and the Chairman of the School Committee. Two of the school projects that were authorized by the Honorable Town Council, one of them was the elementary school for twelve million, four four one, which was adopted back on June 25, along with the feasibility study and schematic design for the, for the high school, was one point six million dollars. One of the things that we did is not permanently borrow those monies. We did a bond anticipation note borrowing. You see, we added this, the far right column. Those will be maturing on June 25 of 2020. That will allow us either to roll those monies over or to permanently borrow them. One of the things we mentioned, answering Council Donato's question, was why the various different terms. If we went and permanently borrowed plan design, we'd have to pay it back in five years. So what we're doing with this money, the twelve point four million dollars, we're doing a bond anticipation note borrowing, and then if we roll it in with other construction monies, we have the abilities to borrow for 20 years. The other thing that Jennifer Gonzalez, the treasurer, working with Mr. Tracy, we did a little analysis, working with the architect, realizing that the twelve point four million dollars, we were only going to need an estimate of ten point four million dollars in fiscal year 20. Thus, that's why we only borrowed the ten, ten million, four hundred thousand dollars. But just by way of background, that twelve million dollars that we borrowed is a short-term borrowing, the taxpayers would be paying one point one two five, five percent. So less, a little over one percent to use those monies for a year before we decide whether we're going to permanently borrow them or roll them over again. The next two slides are related to our enterprise fund. As you know, town council many years ago adopted water and sewer enterprise funds that are part above and beyond the general fund budget. The enterprise funds for fiscal year 20, nineteen million, eight forty-nine oh two. I quickly walked through here, and one of the things that you'll see is the total revenue budget was ten million, almost ten million, seven hundred thousand dollars. The actual monies that came in was only nine million, eight sixty-three sixty-five, or a negative variance of over eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. As you recall, back on May 30, Mr. Tracy and, and Mr. Jesse Mayart, the Director of Administration Finance for Public Works, had wrote a memorandum before council, considered the fiscal year 2020 water and sewer enterprise budgets, raising concerns that the sewer revenue would be shortfall, could be as high as nine hundred thousand dollars. It was eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars under budget. The expenditures were two thirty, seven ten, return, if you will. So the negative variance for fiscal year 2019 was six hundred and six thousand, four eighty. If you recall, one of the things that the recommendation was not, not to move forward with the sewer, moving forward with the retained earnings because of the fact, there was a concern that, that we knew that this revenue would be short, and both Mr. Tracy and Mr. Mayart had brought it out. So in fiscal year 2021, the town has contracted with Weston and Sampson to do a review of our rate structure, and particularly consumption, to determine, because this is one year that can be addressed, but if this continuing, we'd have problems with continuing to maintain our rate, return, retained earnings. So that's the sewer enterprise. Page 18 would show you again, the water enterprise, the variance between the seven million, nine for the budget versus the actual coming in was a negative five twelve. Expenditures under were two thirty-four, thus a negative variance of two seventy-seven, five eighty-two. Again, this was right on point. Mr. Tracy and Mr. Mayart had written that there was a concern for this. We now look to, this is something to bear watching when the development of the fiscal year 2021 water and sewer enterprise budgets. Page 19, this is the second section of the, of the overview tonight, and it's about other information that's relevant to the budget process. The water and sewer prior year funds, these are carryover monies that were to use by superintendent, mayor, and staff for things that are carryover incumbences from prior year. Clearly, the, the one that speaks out is the two point one million dollars, and those are continuing to be utilized to make improvements to the water and sewer infrastructure. Page 20 shows you the overlay account balances. One of the things that the municipal modernization account allowed was to bundle, if you will, we could bundle all of these into the overlay, but for transparency, Mr. Tracy set it up at 2005 to 2012, and then the, the remaining balances. These monies are for anticipated property tax abatements, exemptions, or uncollected taxes. One of the things that'll come once the assessors determine that an overlay account would become an overlay surplus, they would deem that overlay surplus, and that would be available, available for appropriation. Just by way of background, in fiscal year 2019, the Board of Assessors and the Chairman's here with us tonight, Earl Smith, that declared a half a million dollars was surplus, overlay surplus. We recommended a half a million dollars in the fiscal year 2019 budget to put towards the middle, put towards the three elementary school projects. Back in fiscal years 15 and 17, there was an additional eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars transferred in the overlay surplus for one-time curriculum expenditures for the schools. Page 21, a special revenue monies. Just call your attention to the top one, which is the fiscal year 2019 circuit breaker monies of one point five million dollars. That has the abilities, the schools have the abilities to carry those monies over to, in fiscal year 2020, to pay out of district tuition expenses. And then I call your attention to two asterisks, the parking meter fund and the sale of cemetery lots. Both of those will have an appropriation coming out of this fund as of June 30, 2019. The parking meter fund, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be coming out to fund the, in the fiscal year 20 budget, and then twenty-five thousand dollars from the sale of lots. Page 22 is a new sheet from last year, if you will, the Community Preservation Act balances as of June 30, 2019. One of the things I want to point out, that the first three items, open space recreation, reserved for historical preservation, as well as reserved for community housing, each one of those requires a minimum of 10% from that. So Mr. Tracy worked with the Community Preservation Committee, establishing reserves for fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19. Each one of those has a fund of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and then you have undesigned, undesigned fund balance of three point two million dollars. So as of June 30, the monies in the Community Preservation Act monies was four point three million dollars. Now, during fiscal year 20, there was an additional allotment, which is, we're looking at balances in all these accounts as of June 30, 2019. So in fiscal year 20, an additional two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one forty, for each one of those categories are now showing in the, in the open space recreation, historical preservation, and community housing. So what that means, the total today for those first three items is six hundred and thirty-four, just a hundred and twenty dollars shy of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So those three items add up to one point nine million dollars. Additionally, the undesigned fund balance for the CPA monies, estimated for fiscal year 20s, is another one point seven million dollars. So as of June 30, 2020, the town should have Community Preservation Act monies totaling six point eight million dollars, which is related to three fiscal years, fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, and then fiscal year 20. But again, these, we're showing you balances only as of June 30, 2019. The next item that we're talking about is Capital Project Stabilization Fund. The capital projects accounts here, I call your attention to a couple of them, the three, three elementary school projects we just talked about, the one point two million dollars from the sale of the former East Branch Library, along with overlay surplus, and then the Gray Stock capital mitigation monies, which was paid by Gray Stock for the Alon project for a variety of off-site transportation improvements. The primary projects include repaving of Irving Street and reconstruction of the intersection of North Beacon, Taylor and Arsenal Streets, and the intersection of North Beacon and Irving Streets. These improvements will be programmed by DPW Incorporated into the upcoming construction season. Additionally, I've asked Mr. Tracy to work with Superintendent Me to come up with a list as to the timeline for the planned expenditures of the capital monies listed here as of June 30, 2019. Page 24, the, this, the next one is the stabilization trust and agencies. Again, the balances as of June 30, 2019. I'll walk you through a couple of them. The first one is the Capital Project Stabilization. The balance as of June 30 is two million, ninety-one thousand. That's related to a half a million dollar appropriation for fiscal year 20, 21, 22, and 23. Now, the money that we had on the first reading tonight for fiscal year 2024 isn't included in this because this is a balance as of June 30, 2019. The second item, a year ago, if you looked at this, the dollar amount, you would have had, last year, this would have said OPED stabilization fund. Town council voted back in January of 19 to create an OPED trust fund, and one of the items they're working with is the treasurer, collecting Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Tracy are developing an investment plan, but those monies are now in a trust instead of the stabilization. Additionally, the ESCO stabilization fund is a million, three thirty-five. What would be coming out of there for, for the fiscal year 20 budget is five hundred and fifteen thousand, six eighty-eight, thus giving us a positive variance of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, four twelve. The sped stabilization fund of a million, eighty, eight thousand, seven twenty-two. That back in fiscal year 14, the town council established this fund of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and then July 10 of 2018, the school committee had provided an additional two hundred thousand dollars to put towards that fund. And then the last item we want to point to is the collective bargaining stabilization fund. You look at the balances of June 30, it's six hundred and twenty-one thousand, one eighty-five. The proposed amendment before you this evening is for six twenty-one, five hundred, because that's what, we have additional interest since June 30. And that, that would show you the capital stabilization trust and agency accounts. Page 25 just shows for background, development of the budget includes the five basic tenets that we have used very successfully throughout the years. Page 26 and page 27 show, which are on page three and four, the budget message. These show you the top priorities, the, of the town council's rank, cost savings and revenue guidelines, as well as the top seven priorities for the program enhancement expenditure guidelines. Again, I won't read all of these, but a lot of them are incorporated in the fiscal year 20 budget. The, the next item, and this is kind of where we getting to the last section, if you will, of our presentation, and this is kind of a key page. We're talking tonight, the council president invited everyone to the kickoff of the fiscal year 2021 budget. One of the things that we want to point out, I think is very critical, is the second bullet here, which is basically saying, the numbers tonight are provided a blemish and subject to change as the budget process evolves. Well, I'll touch more on this on page 54, the projected comparison. But another item, before we go on through the rest of the forecast, the one thing I think was important to point out, is that we're on to the last part of the presentation tonight, is, I think it's appropriate to read an excerpt, which I read last year, from the Division of Local Services Financial Management Review of the town, and the excerpt reads as follows. "The town council adopts an annual operating budget and capital outlay program, approves supplemental spending, and authorizes debt. The council has adopted policies for the administration of town government and its programs. Its financial policies include funding budgets with current revenues, using conservative revenue estimates, having reserves on hand of the seven to 10% of the budget," which clearly the council's changed that to eight to 15%, "and making annual capital expenditures, including debt, but exclusive of enterprise funds, that are at least seven and a half percent of the budget." These policies are supplemented with a set of annual budget policy guides, ranking the costs, the council's cost saving and spending priorities that the council adopts after the manager briefs them tonight, if you will, in the fall, on Watertown's fiscal condition, and provides the five-year revenue and expenditure forecast. Again, the Financial Management Review from the Division of Local Services was on to say, "To ensure fiscal stability is maintained while essential services are provided, Watertown has established strong financial management practices. The town manages the budget well and has tight financial controls in place." So prior to getting into the forecast for fiscal year 2021, I want to talk about what we talked about back when we submitted the budget in April. The three major highlights for fiscal year 20, which we're in now, where we're having a fully funded retirement system as of July 1, 2019. That was related to a funding schedule as of January 1, 2018, and it was also a result of the town council appropriating over eleven point one million dollars over 10 fiscal years, which resulted in a hundred and fifty-two point three four percent increase to the, for the unfunded pension liability, was expected to be paid off as of July 1, 2019. The other two major items that we were talking about was funding, a plan to address the unfunded OPED liability, and then lastly, was funding the three elementary schools, the total a hundred and seventy million dollars, all within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half. So that's when we budget, submitted the budget in April. We had those three basic tenets that we're looking to move for, that many, many communities would love, love to have. One of the items that we want to talk about tonight before we get into is, we had the flexibility within those three categories. Two weeks ago today, went to the retirement board to have discussion about developing a funding schedule for January 1, 2019. The assumption for the fiscal year 20 budget was that the unfunded pension liability would paid off as of July 1, 2019. There was discussion with the, Ashura was there with the retirement board, and there were two items that, that raised concern in developing the unfunded pension liability, the funding schedule to submit to PEREC, and they were as follows, a new the funding schedule to submit to PERC, and they were as follows, a new mortality table assumption and a lowering of the rate of return investment assumption. So I want to touch on the first one, which is the, the retirement board was looking to adopt a new mortality table assumption. That's related to a society of actuaries have recently completed a large, very large mortality study of public sector pensions, planned participants that reveal that people are living longer than previously mortality tables have predicted. That's a good thing. So people are living longer, they're gaining more from a pension, and that, and that's a good thing, but that was a need that we need to address within the funding thing. The other one was although recent rate of returns have exceeded assumptions, current economic conditions are not favorable for sustaining past performances. Most pension systems have decreased their rate of return of investments. So at that meeting, there was discussion with the retirement board, do we do one, do we do two? And what the town administration worked with town council has always operated under the assumption is, let's get the unfunded pension liability paid off. If we need more monies for the unfunded pension liability, let's put the monies in there, take the monies from the other OPED, other post-employment benefits liability, but, and then keeping the monies for the three elementary schools. So what I'm saying tonight is giving all of those, the retirement board will be sending something to PERC for January 1, 2019, and includes a new mortality table and a lowering of the rate of investment assumption. What all that means is the unfunded pension liability, instead of being paid off as of July 1, 2019, it'll be now being paid off July 1, 2020. So we're talking one fiscal year, so in fiscal year 21, the monies which you'll see later on page 47, will come from the other post-employment benefits funding plan. The good news is the flexibility that we have worked, the town council and the administration is, that we will still have the other post-employment benefits paid off by 2029. But again, that was an item that we wanted to have moved forward. It's still a critical issue, and you'll see when we move forward in the expenditure forecast, and particularly when we get to page 47. Very quickly, I'm, I'm not going to read through all of the, the revenue forecast assumptions. We'll talk them when we get to the numbers. So we would skip pages 29, 30, 31. Now we get to page 32. So this is revenue forecasts, and again, this is beginning for fiscal year 21 through 2023. We'll certainly focus on fiscal year 2021, thus the plenary budget overview for tonight's presentation. So the very first thing I want to kind of deal with is in the fiscal year 2020 budget, if you will, want to call your attention to the third item down, the new growth of When the town council adopted the budget in June, that was $3.5 million. And we now have a positive variance of $1,356,653, and Mr. Smith had attributed that to the following items. Personal property came in over $720,000 over last year. 65 Grove Street, a new office had been transferred to a lab, which provided an additional $400,000, and there were numerous smaller projects that came in $180,000 over, so the, the $1.3 million. So that's in the proposed budget amendment that will be considered two weeks from tonight. Thus, the adjusted levy limit went to 117, 118, 512. That's the starting point for fiscal year 2021. So when you look at the second column top number, you take 2.5% of that, you come out to a little shy of $3 million. Then the new growth for fiscal year 2021 is $3.6 million. If you looked at your budget book tonight or tomorrow, you would see in April, we had that at $3,750,000. So we have tempered the new growth for fiscal year 2021 from $3.750 down to $3.6 million. Certainly, Mr. Smith has been here since January of 2018, has done a fabulous job, has certainly recommended to lower the assumptions from down to $3.6 million in fiscal year 2021. Additionally, in fiscal year 2022, the budget that was adopted in April, we had a forecast of $4 million. Now we're dropping it down to $3.8 million. So again, the fiscal year 2021 forecast this evening has the real estate and personal property taxes going up $6.6 million in fiscal year 2021. You'll see that on page 54. Just by way of comparison, the one thing I think is kind of critical to point out is the new growth of $4.8 million this year, $3.6 next year. Back in fiscal year 2009, it was $980,000, and fiscal year 2011, it was under $800,000. And then so, and certainly last year, so Mr. Smith's first two years in Watertown was $5.8 million, which was 2.6 above budget, and tonight is $1,356 above budget. So that's the real estate taxes, which represent almost 78% of the, of the fiscal year 20 budget in the fiscal year 21 assumption for fiscal, moving forward with taxes. Page 33, state aid is our second category here this evening. What we have done is we've, again, the estimate tonight is to level fund, certainly with Senator Brownsburg and Representative Heck here this evening, we would want, we don't want that to have, but it'd be much easier to, based on the Financial Management Review from the Division of Local Services, it was to estimate conservatively. We've done this for the last six fiscal years, with the be the seventh fiscal years, would rather stop at the same dollar amount, just by way of the, the good work of Senator Brownsburg or Representative Heck and Representative Lawn. The community had almost $885,000 more in local aid in fiscal year 20 than they did in fiscal year 19. And again, the one thing, just as a side note before I forget, of all the efforts of the Senator and our two state representative, the council president, when we did the transfer at September 10, did publicly thank him that evening, they're here this evening and providing us, what, $100,000 for the second set of firefighter sets. So certainly Senator Brownsburg, Representative Heck, and Representative Lawn, very appreciative of all their efforts. The third category of revenue is local receipts. Two pages, just very quickly walk through. The first one I want to point your attention to is the Hotel Excise. Fiscal year 2020 of $700,000 is going up to $950,000. That's related to the hotel being built at the Arsenal Yaj, which would be a, a second major hotel, and then it would go up 250 in fiscal year 2021, and another $150,000 in fiscal year 2022. I call your attention to fees. You look at $4.1 million, going to $4.2, and then you see a drop in fiscal year 2022. That's related to, we're keeping the inspection fees at $2.2 million for, through fiscal year 2021, but in 2022, we dropping it and cutting it half, thus you see the drop down, down to $3.2 million. The second page with the local receipts for revenue forecast, again, shows you, again, call attention to Medicaid reimbursements. We do need to keep an eye on that. Right now, we only had monies come in a total of under, less than $149,000. That bears watching. You'll see the difference between fiscal year 20 and 21, is it a positive variance of $422,804, doing large part to the hotel going up $250,000 and $102,000 from fees. The last revenue category is other financing sources. Again, a drop from fiscal year 20 to 21 of almost $550,000. I call your attention to Collective Bargain Stabilization Fund, the one-time monies that would be in the budget amendment council will consider two weeks from tonight. That's the, the reason for the dollar amount difference, and you'll see this better on page 54. Page 37 shows you utilization of free cash and overlay surplus. We have right now in fiscal year 20 was $2 million. We have $2 million for '21, '22, '23, but that's broken up a general fund, free cash, and then also putting some monies into the sped stabilization fund as a forecast. It would be our hope that we can continue the free cash annual appropriation of $2 million and not need to put any monies in the sped stabilization fund. As I mentioned earlier, we've got, the school department has the fiscal year 2019 circuit breaker money that was on page 21 of $1.5 million, and the current balance in the, in the special education stabilization fund is over a million. So hopefully, we can take that $250,000, we have a forecast, and put that up to the free cash in the annual on page 37. The summary on page 38 shows the current fiscal year 20 budget as amended is $149,849. The forecast budget this evening for fiscal year 2021 would be $156,325. That's an increase of almost $6.5 million, or an increase at, at 4.32%. You'll see this much clearer when we get to page 54. Again, the expenditure forecast, we'll touch upon this about, as we go through the various items. Page 40, I spoke to about the change in the funding schedule for the unfunded pension liability, which you'll speak to in greater detail on page 47. The expenditure forecast on the schools funding, you'll, you'll see this in greater detail as we coming up. Page 42 shows you the departmental expenditures for, from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21. When you do those, the variance between 93, 642, and 97, 286, that's a variance of $3,644, 282, and it's all arithmetic. So the school committee, the school budget right now is based on an increase of 5%. All the other departmental operations are at 2.5%, waste disposal is 3%. That, that's the breakdown of the $3,644. And the other item that I wanted to talk about is insurance employee benefits. We have a budget for fiscal year 2020 of $16,72,000, going up to $17,190. Can't speak enough about the town's joining the Group Insurance Commission as of July 1, 2009. As you know, over the last 11 fiscal years, the increase has been 1.84% of the budget. So that's certainly, this track record, we're working with the Group Insurance Committee is, continues to allow, to greatly assist the town in developing the budgets while providing the highest level services to the citizens, and certainly providing quality health insurance to its employees and its retirees. That's page 42. 43, you'll see two of the top priorities of the town council are related to the school The first one is about continue to develop the Building for the Future Initiative. I won't read all of that. You'll see that coming up in the next few pages. And additionally, to continue work and collaborate with the Watertown Public Schools, looking to sustain funding for the schools and successful education of our children. I'll touch upon that in a few minutes. Page 54 shows you the education appropriation for fiscal year 20 through 23. If you do the math, each one of those are a 5% increase. The submitted fiscal year 2020 budget continues the town's very strong commitment to education, which was an over, increase of over $2.4 million the council appropriated on June 4th. And additionally, as I mentioned, the, we will continue to work collaboratively with the Watertown Public Schools to develop a comprehensive, multi-year education budget that ensures sustainable funding for our schools and successful education of our children. Page 45 touches upon the Building for the Future Initiative. The conceptual recommendation, number 18, for the fiscal year 20 to 24 Capital Improvement Program reads as follows. Concur with the decision to proceed with the Building for the Future Initiative of $170 million for the three elementary, elementary school project, funding within the confines of Proposition 2.5, and, and certainly not going to proceed with some of the other items mentioned there. As a follow-up to that conceptual recommendation, we have, as I mentioned, two main projects, the elementary school project at $170 million, and then the high school project, which I'll talk to later on this evening. In the following, you'll see the projected funding levels for the three elementary school project for fiscal year 20, the one we're in right now, is a little shy of a million. Fiscal year 21 is going to $4.6 million. Fiscal year 2022 is $8.7 million. Fiscal year 2023 is 12 point, almost 12.8 million. Those numbers were in the budget book, compared very favorably, if you went and looked in the budget book, it was April, April 23. All these numbers we now have listed are about a hundred, a little over $100,000 higher than what we forecast in April. And the reason that is, is that we went and permanently borrowed the very first plan design for the three elementary school project, and the borrowing was for $1,078,000. Our original estimate was that we pay for that over 10 years. We need to pay it over five years. So when you take, when you take the, a million, almost $1.1 million, instead of dividing it over 10 years, it'd be a little over $100,000, we have to pay $200,000. There was the difference. So then, I, I want to take a few minutes to talk about the school building committee. As you all know, it was established, 13 appointments of the committee. The committee is the representative of the town in all its dealings with the architect. The committee's first meeting was held on March 14th, 2018, and they've had 40 meetings, 40 meetings since then, including three community forums at each of the three elementary schools. The committee has worked tirelessly with the architect and the proposed three elementary school project. And the proposed three elementary school project creates modern, forward-thinking facilities and associated site amenities that meet the educational, neighborhood, energy efficiency, and recreation goals established through a public process of meetings and forums. And I certainly wanted a shout out to, many of them are here tonight, the chairman of the school building committee is Council President Sedaris, the vice president of the town council, Mr. Pichorelli is here, the two school committee members and Mr. Ports, along with Lindsay Moskowitz. And we also have with us the superintendent of schools, Dean Galston, tonight. I mentioned Heidi Perkins. We've also got Mr. Tracy and Mr. Magoon. I can't stress how hard they've worked, working on this three elementary school project, and, and the town really deserves a, a debt of gratitude to, to all the members of the committee. And then I want to talk about now what the committee is also, is working with AI3 architects on the high school project that will be done with MSBA assistance and a debt exclusion vote. I want to take a moment to talk about that. It was kind of written out there. One of the things that we had to do when we're working with MSBA is, the town is, the school building committee and the three elementary school projects, they're not operating with any MSBA funding needs, so we can do it within here. It'd be nice to have at those monies, but it would take a long time. So what we, the, we had three representatives to represent the community to design a selection panel, and there were a review on August 20th, and then a final, if you will, interviews of the three folks that were interviewed. The designers selection panel were Dr. Galston, the superintendent of schools, Mr. Sedaris, the council president, the school building chairman, along with myself. And, and I, and I would respectfully suggest that Mr. Sedaris and Dr. Galston did a fine job representing the community to, and from where I sit, it was a critical decision that we want to continue with AI3 architects. In my estimation, what they've done in turning folks that were very much opposed to the Hosmer project, now very much in favor of it, it, it made a lot of sense, and quite frankly, when we, when Mr. Sedaris and I went in on August 20th and September 17, taking an Uber and going through our notes driving in, it was clearly our first rodeo. I really don't want to go back to a designer selection panel again. There was only three of us, and it was 13 other members, but the, the school building committee, the designer selection panel voted that, and I think that's a great, great decision to move forward. So that's my thoughts on the school building committee. Page 46, we're getting there, 55 is what we got left, so. Talking about the unfunded pension liability and the post-employment benefits or OPED. Budget policy, two-way, reads in part, is to use the funds. We talked about this, redirecting from the retirement appropriation, and the pension is fully funded to reconstruct the three elementary schools, all the way paying down the OPED liability. Just kind of walk you through the Just kind of walk you through the funding and the retirement appropriation. You'll see that better when we get to page 54. There's listing the four there, as well as the OPEC on 46. So now, here's a kind of a key page, is page 47. Kind of walk you through, and this is the flexibility the community has done to take care of the unfunded pension liability, taking care of the OPEC, and most importantly, taking care of our three elementary school project. So the very first, back six months ago, you saw the forecast, what we had, and I'll walk you through those numbers back when we submitted the budget for fiscal year 2020. We had a fiscal year 19 budget of 18, almost 18.5 million dollars. The recommended budget that council adopted was 22 million, 85,000, 572, which was 3.6 million dollars higher. That came from 2.6 million dollars that Mr. Smith had certified in new growth above the budget, along with a million dollars, and the dollar amounts is moving forward. So there was the breakdown that we had forecast. There's the current appropriation, the 13 million for the pension liability, pension liability, 8 million for the, for the OPEC, and 982,000 dollars for the three elementary school project. So that's the current budget for fiscal year 20. The forecast for, and then one of the things that happened was, you'll see a variance, the 92,000, 437, the council, when they voted on the night of the budget, we needed to adjust the required contribution. So basically, we had appropriation for fiscal year 20 that was adopted, if you go to the second category, the 22 million, 178, nine, nine, nine dollars. So what we're proposing tonight, and we'll have more discussion when we're moving forward, is that the appropriation for pension costs, OPEC, and the three elementary school project in fiscal year 2021 would be 23 million, 440,000, 572, which is exactly a million, 355,000 dollars higher than the current appropriation. That a million, 355 comes from the new growth that's, was certified, that Mr. Smith is saying would be above the budget. Now, I kind of walk you through, because it could be a little confusing how we're looking at fiscal year 21. So in fiscal year, we look at the pension cost for fiscal year 2021, we're under the assumption that it would be fully funded in fiscal year 2020, and the appropriation would go from 13 million dollars down to about 827,000 dollars. What we're saying to you tonight, that the pension appropriation, given the new mortality tables, the return, the rate of return on the assumptions, both of those factors plus performance in, investment performance in calendar year 18, which is not unique to the Watertown Contributory Retirement Board, a lot of folks had the same thing, that the appropriation needed for fiscal year 2021 to pay, have it paid off, would be adding 14.6 million dollars. So obviously, I would prefer to have the original plan of just providing 827,000 dollars. The recommended appropriation to fund the unfunded pension liability on July 1, 2020 will be 14.6 million dollars. When you look at that variance, that's almost 13 million, 800,000 dollars more than what we anticipated six months ago. And that's related to those factors I tucked upon, the mortality table, along with performance, along with lowering the rate of return. So that's the pension. The other post-employment benefits, currently, the appropriation is 8 million dollars. We had a forecast six months ago that we're going to go to 16.7 million dollars. What we're saying tonight, some, something has to give if you're giving more money to the unfunded pension liability. Thus, the recommendation tonight is to lower the OPEC appropriation from anticipated to 16.7, down to 4.2 million dollars. That variance is 12.5 million dollars, less money going to OPEC. That is the flexibility we built in. That being said, rest assured that we still would be on target to have the other post-employment liability paid off in 2029, which was our original forecast. And then lastly, the three elementary school project, we had is for fiscal year 2021, six months ago, was about almost 4.5 million dollars. It went up to 100,000 dollars, which I just spoke to. You'll see that each one of those years, in the forecast, with Mr. Tracy did a variance, which is a million, 355. It's helpful that now, with the pension goes in fiscal year, let's walk through the pension. The pension currently is at 13.1. It would go to 14.6 million dollars, and in fiscal year 2022, goes down to 1.1 million dollars. That's really what we wanted this year. So we're with one year off, and then it would continue at the 1.1 million dollars, which is certainly a heck of a lot better than the 18.5 in fiscal year 19, or the 13 million dollars in fiscal year 20. Additionally, the other post-employment benefits was 8 million dollars in fiscal year 20. We'd go to 4 million dollars, 4.2 in 21, and then shoot up to 13.6. But all these monies, the one thing we can guarantee, that all the debt service for the three elementary schools would be funded for, all within the confines of proposition two and a half. Page 48 shows you the, the debt, the dollar amounts, the forecast from fiscal year 20 to 21 is going up 4 point, almost 4.6, which is related to 3.6 of the three elementary schools. Page 49, I'll call your attention to one item, it's street and sidewalk improvements in fiscal year 20, the million, 61,600 dollars. It suggests to the town councils, since fiscal year 1999 through the fiscal year 20 budgets, which is 22 budgets, the council has appropriated within the proposition, within proposition two and a half, over 15 million dollars, which is on average, almost 689,000 dollars for each one of the two, 22 fiscal years. That's page 49. Page 50 shows you the fiscal year 20 budget of 49, 149, 850, going up to 155, 768. The forecast, that's an increase of 5.9 million dollars, which is a 3.95% increase. You'll see this better when we get to page 54. Page 51 shows you a balanced budget for fiscal year 20, amended as of voting two weeks from tonight. The, and this is one of the first times I've been bringing this up. Currently, tonight, we have more revenues than expenditures, but that can change. But invariably, we're always talking about the challenge, the challenges. We want to make sure we have more revenues than expenditures, but that bears watching. Page 51. Page 52 shows you the revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year 20 is balanced, and then 21, 22, 23. Page 53, this is a forecast comparison that we use, and it basically shows you the changes in six months. So the left-hand column, we had an estimated budget of 100, for fiscal year 2021, of 154, almost 155 million dollars. Tonight, we're suggesting to you that we're going up a million, 353 within the six months. I'll quickly walk you through it. The first one is the real estate and personal property taxes going up a million, 240. And you'd be saying, well, why isn't it the million, 356? It was part of the budget amendment. The reason you have to factor in is we're taking new growth from fiscal year 20, from 3 million, 750, with the estimate dropping at the 3.6 million dollars. The state aid, which we'd shown you earlier, was 113,000 dollars. So the good news is, in six months, the revenue went up a million, 353. The expenditures went up a million, 154. The overall, so the revenue is going up a million, 353. So the positive variance is close to 200,000 dollars. Thus, we're now at the 556, 829. I do want to call your attention to very quickly, some of the changes in the expenditure side, that the departmental appropriation, the 327, 324, change in six months is related to two items. First one is the collective bargaining agreement with the library for fiscal year 20 to 22, the 241,743. And then the police transfers, another 285,000, 581. Want to call your attention to the pension and the OPEC. So you, what you're seeing now is, we had an estimate in April that the pension was going to be 827,000 dollars. Tonight, we're informing you after the discussion two weeks ago with the retirement board, it's going to be 14.6 million dollars. That's a negative variance of 13, almost 13.8 million dollars. We'll fund the majority of that from the OPEC, and then the difference on that is, and then we have some other monies coming down, to showing almost a wipe from, a, a, a wash there. Insurance employee benefits going down 251,000 dollars. Our forecast, we hadn't, we wanted to change once we had our final census numbers, and the debt and interest has dropped for two reasons. One, we did a permanent borrowing, the rates are a little lower. Additionally, town council appropriated monies to pay for like the north fire station, paying cash. Some of those monies, we won't be doing. So that's the projected comparison. Page 54 shows you the projected comparison, currently fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21. The revenues that we saw in page 38 are going up 6 points, almost 6.5 million dollars. The expenditures are going up 5.9. Thus, we've got the variance, a positive variance moving forward here. The, again, revenue's going to go up, revenue's going to go down, expenses, it may go up or down, but we will certainly have a balanced budget to submit to town council in April moving forward. Last page. There are 57 bullets on this page, and I'm not going to speak to each one of them. Want to touch upon, just mentioned the unfunded pension liability, we spoke a lot about that tonight. It'll be fully funded in July 1, 2020, instead of July 1, 2019. The good news is the OPEC liability will still be paid off in 2029. Want to speak about the building for the future initiative in kind of greater detail. So, and to kind of break it up, the very first one, obviously, is the three elementary school projects, the Hosmer, the Coniff, and the Lowell. The cost for that is 170 million dollars, all being paid within the confines of proposition two and a half. Want to kind of talk where the school building committee, working with the architect, is on this right now. The two bullets we touch upon, the first one is the phases that they're in for the three elementary school project. It's a construction document phase is underway, with a scheduled completion date sometime in early calendar 2020, in March or April. Right now, what's going on is the detailed construction and bidding documents are being prepared. The updated cost estimates and budget review will be conducted again before the end of this calendar year, and the construction and bidding documents were completed in early March of 2020. The other phase I want to touch about is the construction contractor bidding, which is the, is scheduled to be, to be released in spring of 2020. Both the Hosmer and the Coniff will be billed as, bid as a single package, and constructed sequentially. What we're looking to do here is to have a single collective package for the, the Coniff and Hosmer in order to receive the most competitive pricing, and to ensure that we receive the same building systems, materials, and it would also allow the team to manage only a single contractor for these two projects. That's the three elementary school projects, we spoke great detail on page 45 of the school building committee's efforts. Next thing I want to talk about, and it's, it's coming up, is the high school project. That's going to follow a path of MSBA, looking for MSBA assistance and a debt exclusion vote. Kind of want to talk, what we're in now, we talked about selecting the AI3. We're in the phase, the town's in the phase, it's called the feasibility and schematic process. And there are three distinct phases, and I'll just read all three of them into the record, but I'm only going to speak to the first one. It's the preliminary design program, the preferred schematic study and report, and the schematic design. So those are three various phases, and they're all got on or about six months, six-plus months of the, of the phases to move forward with. But we're in the preliminary design program right now, and I want to talk about five tasks that that's involved with the, the architect, working with the school building committee. The first one is to develop an educational program for the high school, and that's primarily a school department task, working in conjunction with AI3. Requires an extensive process of educational visioning sessions and detailing narratives of how the facility will be utilized to provide an appropriate educational program. The second task under the preliminary design program phase is develop an initial space summary, and that would be details the size of each of the proposed space with the new building and the overall proposed building site. The third task within this phase, preliminary design program, is the evaluation of the existing high school. This is a detailed analysis of the condition, the organization and characteristics of the existing high school building by AI3, and a summary of its potential for continued reuse as a school. The fourth task is site development requirements, and under that, there'll be identification and evaluation of any potential sites, including the current high school site, along with other sites in the community. And then the last task that we'll speak to tonight is a preliminary evaluation of the alternatives. A narrative description of the planning options considered for each one of the proposed site would be need to be done. An explanation which options would be determined viable for continued evaluation, and which options would be eliminated, and why. That would be drafted by AI3. When that documentation is done, it would need to be submitted to the MSBA for their approval to proceed to the next step, which would be the preferred schematic study and report, and a schematic design, which both of those phases take on or about six months each. And the last thing I want to talk to about, you know, we talked about the three elementary school project, that the administration, the town council, funding within the confines of two and a half, 170 million dollars. So this next bullet is debt exclusion vote through all of those phases would be in calendar year 2021. And I'm simply delighted we've got the chairman of the school committee, the superintendent of schools, and the director of finance and operations here. This is a task the school committee will need to take on, will need to educate the community of the need for the high school. I certainly feel it's a desperate need, but we will need to have the school committee, you know, working with the community, to educate the community as to why we need the high school. I, for one, would very much be supportive of it, it's debt exclusion vote, but would be hoping the school committee will be able to take the lead in, in working and educating our community as to why we need the high school project, and it would need, how it would be done, would be a debt exclusion vote. The next bullet I want to talk to is collective bargaining, very key. We've got five town unions for fiscal year 20 to 22. We have six unions, but we have an agreement with the library touched, touched upon, that has for fiscal year 20 to 22, which are base wage increases for each one of those fiscal years at 2% each year. The school department, the school committee, has all of their six unions are needing a collective bargaining agreement to move forward. The next item is item 2I from the fiscal year 2020 budget policy guidelines, and I, and I think it's a critical issue, is kind of putting it up here, and not because the chairman of the conservation commission's here tonight, he didn't see this before, anyone else saw it, but it is the acquisition of land for open space and recreational use. Clearly, you know, where we're looking for, certainly want to work with council for the, the budgetary plan to meet identified need. We touched upon the community preservation committee, monies, they're moving forward. They had their first meeting back in February of this year, their development of a CPA plan to move forward. The community development planning, there were six items underneath there, touch upon a couple of them. One of them is the, is the parking management plan implementation. Town council had adopted in the plan to have the council, the administration move forward implementation. And then the other one I want to talk to is about iQub. This has gone on several years, back in June of 17, when council adopted to move forward with Athena with the iQub program. I want to thank Senator Brownsberg, Representative Heck, in trying to help to move this process along. As you know, the Athena campus is on the market to be sold. One of the things that we're waiting for now is a determination from the Commonwealth as to whether the benefits and obligation of a proposed iQub program may be assigned, may be assigned to a subsequent owner. Upon receipt of that determination, we would then look to Athena to provide the town with a clear statement of his intentions with regard to participation in the iQub process during the period leading up to a sale of the property. The capital improvement plan, again, just showing you in broad terms. The capital improvement plan, again, just showing you in broad terms, but the one item, the very first bullet, another critical one, is fiscal year twenty twenty budget policy guideline two F, which is to develop a budgetary plan to meet identified need, a D P W staging space. On the right-hand side of the column, we've got six park improvements listed there. They won't go through all of those, we've gone through those. The street and sidewalk improvements, fiscal year twenty, we've got two proposed loan orders that'll be coming forward, working with the community of public works. One of them will be the, the two and a half million dollars, the, the typical, and then another million and a half, one point five million dollars for the connector roads. And then additionally, which would be four million dollars in fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-four, would be sixteen million dollars or four million dollars for each one of the, for the fiscal years twenty-one to twenty-four. Can't state enough why we need to continue on the path for maintaining our triple-A bond rating. Just quickly, a couple of other items, the townwide informational technology assessment, council appropriated monies for that study at the end of March. That report should be coming in the coming weeks to town council. And then the second bullet I wanted to touch upon was the improving the public shade trees, increase the overall treat canopy. That was fiscal year twenty twenty budget policy guideline two D. So, in closing, Mr. President, members of the council, the goal of this administration and all the town departments to provide the highest level services to the citizens of the community while utilizing the taxpayers' dollars sufficiently possible. Certainly want to thank everyone who's been here tonight, all the department heads, and particularly, I want to thank two of the finance members, Mr. Tracy, town auditor, assistant town manager for finance, for his efforts in putting this together, along with the chairman of the board of assessors. This is obviously a finance report, but all the department heads are here today. I, I would, would end by saying I think much has been accomplished, and there's more to be done. And I look forward to working with town council and the adoption, which is the next step of the process, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget policy guidelines. And that deadline is by the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you also to all the department heads, State Senator Brownsberg, Representative Heck, the school committee member, John Poets, for coming through and listening this evening. Did you have any additional commute? I didn't think so. I didn't think so. Next item is request for information, any requests for information. Counselor Cornelis.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for your presentation. Certainly, we have good news before us this evening. My request for information was actually submitted last week. It pertains to an I T department glitch that has occurred. My colleagues are aware of the situation. I forwarded the information last week. Late Friday afternoon, I did receive a response that the issue is being worked on, and there would be updates coming. This evening, I will be submitting to our council clerk the backup documentation that will be included in this evening's minutes. So for anyone who would like to view what transpired last week, after the minutes are approved, the material will be available. For anyone who'd like to personally reach out to me, I'd be more than happy to share it with you. It's all public document, and I will be elaborating under announcements. Thank you.
Any other requests for information? Announcements? Counselor Petrelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the next step in the budget process is developing the town council's budget priority guidelines. And so as in past years, the budget and fiscal oversight committee will be putting this together for the council to be presented at the November twenty-sixth town council meeting. So the counselors should submit the information to me by Friday, October twenty-fifth at five P M. Put it in any format that works for you. I'll, I'll send out copies of the current year's budget priority guidelines, if you want to use that as a starting point. We'll put all, all the input into a worksheet for the committee to review. It's past years. We are tentatively scheduling meetings to be held on October twenty-ninth, November fourth, and November eighteenth. The report needs to be finalized and sent to the council clerk by November twenty-first to get on the agenda for November twenty-sixth. As in past years, I just want to reiterate that it's not the committee's task to decide whether each request is a good idea or a bad idea. Rather, the committee acts as an editor to take the input from nine counselors and synthesize it into a concise, actionable document for the manager. The committee may decide not to include a request if it requires policy direction from the council before the manager can include it in the operating budget. If the task is substantially complete, if it's too ambiguous to be included in the operating budget, if it's part of the capital improvement program and not part of the operating budget, if it's within the authority of another body who has not yet weighed in, or it overlaps with another existing goal or request. So that's sort of how we, we work that. Everybody's open to the public, everybody's welcome to attend. And I look forward to getting your input and getting this done.
Any other announcements? Counselor Woodland.
Just to piggyback off Counselor Petrelli's announcement, if members of the council make recommendations or edits for those meetings, I'd strongly encourage that you attend. That way, the committee can ask questions and clarify any ambiguities. Or if those dates, they do end up being the times we'll be meeting and you can't make it, I'm sure you can reach out to Counselor Petrelli, and he's more than happy to delay any of your recommendations to a subsequent meeting. But it's very important that the counselor makes recommendations that they attend those meetings to discuss them further if any questions arise. Thank you.
Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody's invited to the fire department open house this Saturday from nine to noon at Station One, which their headquarters on Main Street. Thank you.
Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. I have three announcements. One is that on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, this is the annual prescription jog take-back day. So if you have any prescriptions that you'd like to get rid of rather than sending them down the toilet, please bring them to the October twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen drop-off, and it'll be at the police station from ten A, ten A M. to two P M. Secondly, I want to take a moment to say that we have a new staff person over at the Watertown Youth Coalition, and she's terrific, and she's, has put together a plan to hear from residents about how can we best support the wellness of our community and the types of wellness events that would do well for youth. And that's going to be on October fifteenth, Tuesday. There's a meeting at both, at the Watertown Public Library from twelve-thirty to two. And again, that will be repeated at the Watertown High School from six-thirty to eight on the same day, October fifteenth. So if you can't make the afternoon, please try to be in the evening. If you can't make the evening, you have an opportunity to have input in the, in the afternoon session. Also, the Committee on Media and Public Outreach is holding a really very important meeting on October twenty-third, which is a Wednesday. This will be a summary presentation of what took place at the community engagement project, and particularly what happened at the kitchen table conversations, eighteen conversations were held in August and September of this year. That will begin at seven o'clock, and we're doing it in the middle school and the cafeteria of the middle school. Again, that's Wednesday, October twenty-third, the Committee on Media and Public Outreach at the Watertown Middle School in the cafeteria at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Counselor Cornelis.
Thank you. Tomorrow evening, which is October the ninth, Wednesday, there is going to be an informational meeting at nineteen Coolidge Hill Road to discuss the proposed plans for a self-storage facility. I must remind folks that the developer has also submitted for a forty-three, forty-B development and has received preliminary approval. But the discussion for tomorrow evening will be the self-storage. And going back to my request for information, the issue that arose while sending out these meeting notices to over six hundred constituents, all constituents with a Comcast dot net email address were rejected by Mailer Demon in batches of twenty-five, thirty, totaling approximately All of this takes three to four hours for this notice to be generated by Comcast. All that transpired last weekend. Last Monday, I contacted our internal I T office and spent in excess of nine hours communicating back and forth with our staff, who were attempting to tell me that the issue was not town-related, that it was Comcast-related. Well, it was a very unfortunate situation until I decided to personally contact Comcast and was told they had nothing to do with it, they would never block a government email address. It was all within the settings of the I T department in Watertown. The unfortunate aspect of it was that no one would actually accept the responsibility. And it took most of the day of back and forth communication, that will be noted in the minutes, for some, for someone to finally accept the fact that there was an issue, and the issue was actually known prior to my even bringing it forward. So whether it be a town resident, whether it be an employee, whether it be a town counselor, we should never be placed in this situation. I cannot afford to personally spend over nine hours addressing town issues during my day. My counselors, my, my colleagues here might think that I'm grandstanding, but no one can recoup my day. No one can recoup the time that I spent attending the kitchen table conversations. I attended four of them.
Counselor, unfortunately, we're getting way off-base by talking about kitchen conversations, so please finish up what you're talking about.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to segue into it because residents want to receive communication. If I can't send them communication via town email address, I don't know how else to do it. So hopefully, the issue will be resolved. It's never going to happen again, and if it does, people will address it appropriately. Thank you.
Counselor Falcoff.
Thank you. Tomorrow, from two to, two-thirty to six, is the last farmer's market at Salt and Stoll Park. It's been a great season, except for all the rain that forced several cancellations, but I think that Stephanie Venetcello, the wellness coordinator for Watertown, has done a great job publicizing the farmer's market, and it's been very enjoyable. So everybody should stop by tomorrow. Your last chance.
Any other announcements? Counselor Petrelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind the public that the, the developers' meeting for the project at one sixty-six Main Street, which is the Tedeschi's across the street from Town Hall, has been rescheduled to Thursday, October seventeenth, at six-thirty at the police station. So it'll be at the police station, community room, instead of at Town Hall.
Thank you. Public forum. Any member of the public wish to be heard? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for attending.
I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question.
I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question.
I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that? You can ask me a question. I asked you a question. What's that?